At 6:30 PM, we'll call the Monday, November 27th, 2023, City Mayor, regular City Council meeting to order. If we could start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Do we have any additions to the agenda tonight?
No additions tonight, Mayor.
And I'll look for motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion?
Motion.
Second.
A motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. That will take us to public comments. If there's anyone who would like to discuss anything not on the agenda, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close public comments. We'll move to consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that needs to be pulled for further discussion? Hearing none, I'll look for motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. That will take us to business item number nine. Pay application for a public works building project.
Thank you, Mayor. We have the final pay application for the public works building project in the amount of $34,525. This reps resents the retainage that we were holding on the project. We've completed the entirety of the punch list except for replacement access door to the air handling unit that's in the back of the building that was installed. But the contractor, I said, that's on order, should be here this week, I believe it is, and they'll get that installed. Considering the project's been going really smooth and VAS has been really good to work with, architects, I and Kyle are confident of closing out the project while they get that one last item taken care of.
I'll look for motion to approve the final payment to VAS construction for the public works building project.
Motion.
Motion, a second.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. That will take us to the approval of the fire department officer appointments.
Thank you, Mayor. Each year, we have a slate of officers for the fire department that go up for appointment. This year, we had the five positions you see there in front of you. All of the recommended appointees to those positions ran unopposed for them, and they are incumbents in there. So recommending approval of the slate of officers for 2024 through 2025.
Thank you. I'll look for a motion to approve the fire department officer appointments.
Motion.
Motion, a second.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. That will take us to city council reports. Councilmember Wagner, anything to report on?
Nope.
Councilmember Ely?
Yes, we had a parks meeting last week, and we have the tree lighting ceremony coming up this Sunday from 4:30 to 5:30 with the actual tree lighting taking place at 5:15. So it'd be great to see people showing up for that.
Wonderful. Thank you. Councilmember Held, anything to report on?
Nope, no meetings.
Nope.
And I have nothing myself. Chief Metzl, do you want to report out Santa coming to the fire station Friday?
Yeah, Friday, Santa will be at the fire station from 5:00 to 7:00 for pictures.
Wonderful. Thank you. So hopefully, everyone can attend that. I appreciate it. With that, I'll look for motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned. That will roll us right into the workshop. We'll call it call to order with the 2024 budget and levy final look.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll roll right into this. So a handful of minor updates to the budget before we roll into final. So the goal will be to have this wrapped up tonight as our proposed final budget. That way, when we get to our meeting in December, since we don't have a second meeting in December, our first meeting in December, we pass the levy and budget when we get to it, and no more workshops after that for a while, at least on the budget. So the changes, again, highlighting in yellow, we come down here to community center rentals. That was increased by a few thousand more. I think I had it at 5,000 or 6,000 before. We currently have 8100 in community center rentals yet at this point in the year, and we still have December to go through. So I'm confident we'll hit that 8500 mark. So adjusting that to what we're getting for this year. We're getting more rentals as people are getting back into those swigging things, so it's good to see it in greater use. That's it for the revenue side on the general fund for changes. On the expenditure side, under general government, office supplies, I had that at 5,000 and decreased that to 4,000. And looking at the expenses we have for this year, it looks like that was probably a little bit of overshoot on those. That was trying to take into account adding the third person in, and what would that do to office supply? So put a little bit higher in there to start with, but as we get towards the end of the year, looking at actual expenses, I think 4,000 will do just fine. There's not a huge consumption of additional office supplies in that area. Postage, adjusting that. That was at 1,000. No, I'm sorry, is that 500? Adjusting it to 750. Again, aligning with what we're seeing in 2023. With print and binding, I think that was at 4,000, adjusting it down to 5. I'm sorry, 3,500. Small tweaks here and there, just for what act-
Postage goes up again in January, just that way.
Yeah.
I'll figure Metzl throw it out there.
Now, appreciate that. We'll tweak that up.
That's the wrong one.
So we'll tweak that a little bit there. Insurance-
Is that in postage, though?
I'm sorry.
You put-
That was print binding. We'll just add a little bit more there to make sure we're covered. Print binding, this is our share of various things we have published. Greater Minnesota Communications, majority of those. So aligning what we're seeing with costs there. Insurance general, this insurance denotes our work comp and property casualty through the League of Minnesota Cities. And this, we got the renewal numbers here recently, so this is adjusting it more to actual. They were figuring about, and I think it went from 11,500 up to 12 for the last budget to this, or last budget look to this one. So minor tweak on that. Going down to council wages, professional services, it was at 1,000, dropped it to 500. We're just not having a lot of professional services used by the council anymore. It's more staff-related type of stuff. So it hasn't been that high for years, so dropping that down to what we're seeing usage at. Assessing services, we had on the consent agenda, the contract for assessing services into next year with Carver County. Based upon that contract that we just got, adjusted that. This was at 16, I think this was at 17,000 before. Adjusting it to 18,000, which will cover the cost of assessing services, came in about six, was it 6.2 or 6.3% higher? And I think I was figuring more along that three to four, so adjusting that to meet actuals. Down to community center, adjusting this upward, I think this was at 11, adjusting it up to 12 to get it aligned with the actual cost as we're seeing coming in. Having, now that we're getting more community center use, we're getting more cleanings involved, things of that nature. I think once every so often, we're also having the kegerator cleaned out, whereas that was not being done on a regular schedule. So those combined, adjusting them up just a little bit. Probably the big one in general fund is right here for the professional services for the police contract. I received the 2024 contract this morning from the sheriff's department, which confirmed that is the figure that they're having in there. So to break down where we're at currently, under the old 10-hour shift system, it was 40 hours per week, which is 2,080 hours per year. We had .88 of that, while New Germany had the remaining .12. We were at $130,086, as you can see there. Excuse me. When they did a workload, and as we were going through the Watertown process for regionalization, part of that was doing a workload analysis. Carver County Sheriff's Office did that, and they found that, I'm sorry, backtrack a little bit. .88 goes to about roughly 35 hours a week, and then New Germany gets the remaining five, roughly. When they did their workload analysis, they saw Mayor really only needed 28 to 29 hours a week to get sufficient coverage for the workload that they've been seeing through the department. So as the Watertown regionalization didn't finalize, we had conversations with the sheriff's office about purchasing back times since we would have access. Another component of that is going from 10 to 12s. Instead of being at 2,080 hours, we're at 2184, since it's 42 hours a week under a 12-hour schedule. So there are more hours that would come into play. The sheriff's office said, yes, we'll buy back, since they're having staffing shortages themselves. They're buying back some times, so that'll turn into general patrol hours in the area. So it's not like Brad will be going clear to the southeast corner of the county. He'll stay in the north patrol region, but they will buy those hours back. So that reflects those revisions in it. We were looking at about $152,000 for next year without any buyback, and that brought it down to 118,560. So a little bit of nice savings there.
Go up one more to the community center?
Yep.
Well, if the revenue is coming in at 8100 or whatever that number was, we'd be relooking at our rental fees. I mean, if our expenses are more than we're getting for rental, should we be looking at that? I mean, if we're getting $8,000 in revenue, but we're paying 12,000 for professional services?
So, okay, I get what you're saying. So that's just not, okay, so community center, that covers all of our cleaning services contract? So that includes office cleaning on a week-
That's the whole building?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
The bulk of that is when she comes in once a week to do the R. I says, I'm good with that then. Thank you.
Yep.
Then down in fire protection, we're seeing a few more repair, or I'm sorry, insurance. Again, this is the property casualty along with workman comp. That went up a bit more than was expected. So this went from, I think, 13, 13,5 up to 15 to catch up with what we're seeing on the renewal. Electric utilities, this went up, I believe, from 8,000 to 8,500, just to make sure we're covering. And then on the repairs and maintenance, this was, I think, about 13, 13,5, putting up to 15. We saw a few more repairs in there, and we just want to make sure we're covering what we're seeing on that front. Down to highway streets and roads for employer-paid health, this was a slight decrease from 13,000 down to 1275. The insurance renewal for the employees came in less than I was predicting. So I usually predict a 10% inflator for budgetary purposes. I think it came around six, six and a half. So we saw a, adjusting that down, or just based upon actuals rather than predicted. So that was the change in there. You'll see that again in parks as well. And again, same here under insurance, adjusting that to meet actuals. Maintenance building, telephone, there's no telephone service in the maintenance building, so that was moved over into streets because that's where the cell phones are at. So that was wiped out entirely. Electric utilities, that was at, I think, 4,000. But tracking the last few months since the, tracking the last few months of electric usage at the building since it's been in play for a couple of months now, I've been seeing that. So taking it from 4,000 to 3,000, that should be plenty. Well, I think we're at about 2,000 spent on the year right now for electric down at that maintenance building. So that should be plenty to spare. Well, not plenty to spare, that's poor wording, but should be enough. Gas utilities, that got bumped down a little bit as well. We didn't do, I think that was about 4,000, bumping it down to three, just based upon usage once again that we're seeing there. Parks and Rec, there's the health insurance adjustment. That was at 13, 13,5, got adjusted back down to actuals. And that's it for general fund changes. Other than the law enforcement one, these are really small, $500,000 tweaks here and there, just to dialer in. So when we look at these updates overall, the biggest one being law enforcement, the last time we looked at the budget, we were projecting revenues over expenditures at $8,000. But with the law enforcement change and some of these other tweaks, we're now at $38,165 revenues over expenditure. So that's going to be a question we'll come back to. I'll run through the other budgets there, very straightforward. But we'll come back to this number. We want to, like in previous years, we want to balance to zero at the end of the day. So we want to figure out how we want to adjust this. For the water fund, interest earnings, adjusted this down from 9,000 to 8,000. Comes more in line with what we're seeing. I think as we do some updated investments here, we could see better, but just want to stay conservative on that. That's the only change to the revenue side of things. Otherwise, it's been the same as we've seen. On the expenditure side of things, this was at, I believe, 7,000 before, up to 9. I know Kyle's, Kyle's, he's doing, he's working on doing some breakpoint chlorination with the system, which means you inject more chlorine to get to a point where it becomes, this is a very high-level version. But to reach breakpoint, and by injecting the additional chlorine, you get to a point where you get a lot of free chlorine molecules in the system. And the free chlorine molecules don't have that taste you associate with chlorine. But you have to build the system up to get there. So it seems counterintuitive that you add more chlorine to get rid of the taste and the smell, but that's what Kyle wants to work towards. So he's going to be working towards that, but that means you have to buy more chlorine to get in the system to get there. So the overall, we're spending a little bit more, but the idea is we deliver a better quality water product by trying to eliminate that taste and smell of chlorine in the system. Adjusting this, this was at 22, adjusting it to 23 for electric utilities, just to say on top of that. Same with gas utilities, went from 1,500 to 2,000 to keep up with utilities we're seeing there. And that is the big changes for the water fund. Looking at just under 26,000 revenues over expenditures. Utility funds, we don't need to balance out. Like we talked about previously, utility funds should have 5% to 10% profit margin. Surplus revenues over expenditures, that you're putting in way in fund reserves. Onto sewer? No, didn't have any changes to sewer. No changes from last time. That's fine. Storm has no changes, and EDA has no changes. Those are pretty well set. So those are the changes in the general fund and water, otherwise I believe we're pretty dialed in. Coming back to the conversation with the general fund, back to the 38,165, and how you would like to handle this. We want to get this to zero.
Should we put more in park and rec since the equipments, that correct equipment's going to cost us more?
So getting back to that, that was something, when we talked about the preliminary budget, that was brought up. The decision was made at that time, this used under asphalt sidewalk replacement, that was 100,000 because we took the public works and just shifted it up into asphalt sidewalk replacement. An additional 25 was added to that in the preliminary levy. There was talks of having 25 here, and then 25, additional 25 in parks and rec as well, back at that time, just as a refresher to council. Sorry about interrupting there. Take it away.
No, no.
I would say too, right with the, to Chad's point, the company that we now have to source, American-made, and it's going to come in higher than expected because we can't not do it because of the DNR grant.
So for the splash pad, we got the updated quote for the compliant, BABA compliant equipment, and it was just under 25 grand additional cost. The two options are you can continue to try for the waiver. Now, there's no guarantee with the waiver. Or we can say 25 grand, that's an additional cost. We can look at simply paying and making sure the project is a go. The waiver process can still be done, but all indications, it's a six-month process at least, and we just started that in October. And then you would need to get the waiver before you can start, because that's when, if you got the waiver, that's when the non-compliant stuff would be deemed compliant, then they could order it, then they could get to building it.
And the waiver process has started?
Yes, it has started. But the DNR asked, and they've got a couple of other waiver processes on different projects the feds do, not splash pad related, and some of those waivers under similar types of circumstance, they're already six months into it without a decision one way or another on it. So you look at those lead times. And when we had conversations with the DNR, I had asked them the question, if they, if Splash Pad manufacturer comes back with a updated cost to be compliant, would that increased cost be eligible for some additional grant funding? Because the grant is 50/50, and if we have a cost increase that's outside of our control, could we get additional grant funding on a 50/50 basis? I submitted that question to DNR last week, haven't heard back from them since I got the updated cost. And they said they truly have internal discussions about it. They didn't say no outright, but they would have to vet that, depending on what they have. And if they were to cost participate, then you're talking 12.5 additional cost increase if they pitch in the other 12.5 on that. But to your point, I'd say they don't come back. If you pitch the extra 25 into the 2024, then that would cover the increased cost. So if we went that route, looking at that, putting that in, and then what you would do is go back up here. I mean, you'd lower this by 25,000. Which, then at the revenue portion, then the 25 reduces here, comes back into play here. So your levy now stays the same. You're just adjusting, adjusting it out of the surplus you're seeing here and putting into the capital. So that would then go down to 4,662.16. Or 4,462.6. So your bottom number there stays the same. Just toss back the councils out, which we would like to.
Seems to make sense to me.
I'm okay with-
Have those additional fees coming. You know, more of a one-time. A one-time for this year seems to make sense to me.
But now we still have to find a place that there's no 13,000.
With this, the extra 25 would cover the total cost of the increased cost. So it was like 24 and change for the increased cost. Now, there's a possibility that the DNR might pick up half of that.
Right. But I thought you said we had 38,000 that we had to fund for.
Yeah, yeah.
We should have 13 left, right?
Right. Yeah, yeah. Sorry. Yep. So after reducing the 25, we're still 13,165 revenues over expenditures.
Streets and sidewalks seems to be appropriate for that, to me.
So our options are to just move it in here, keep the levy the same with no changes. I did get my preliminary, and I, there was a decrease for the city of mayor.
Yep.
Couple hundred bucks.
For my house value. My house value went up, but because we're changing the way we budget, I think it makes it, we did go down. Or is your other option to take the 13 and just not levy for it?
Correct. You could do that as well.
I think we already know we're going up next year. I'd like to keep the increase minimal. So I'd like to keep the levy as close to where we're at. I mean, if you want your nice straight numbers, then I would say increase the sidewalks to 135,000 and take your whatever, 3,000 and some change and reduce the levy by that, like, because it's going to have such a minimal impact.
Yep.
To keep your numbers very nice.
I'd agree with that.
So yeah, you could take this number, you can add some more into any of these that you wanted. Or we just reduce the levy again by 13,165, and that's that.
Ten to streets.
I would agree.
Streets, we know is always an ongoing project that we're always going to have, and we just can't, we just don't know what the costs are going to come in next year. So I think throwing another 10 in there seems reasonable.
Just to keep my numbers consistent, so we'll do 10 there. What was it? 13,165. So that should be zero, and it is.
Bingo.
Or 3,305,1.
That works for me.
I like it.
Looks good.
So did that change the percentage then down there, or no? You have to manually do that, right?
Nope, it changed it. So it was at, so this increasing, this went, it was at 10.25 something.
I didn't see, yeah.
It adjusted slightly. It's still 10 and remainder.
I think it looks good.
I think this just shows that we're in a healthy position, just in general, that we can, even with the high cost of things, we can still have a little bit more focus in budget now that we have you onboard.
Yeah, I think 25, it looks good once again. LGA, this, so people watching, they don't see, well, how the, how can you do that? Well, the CIP from 22 to 24 went up. We had 23 as an up year, but that was a one-time thing for the project that we did in the streets. So that's coming back down to 450. I think we, the big thing you look at is the debt here, and that's going down here as well. And then we got like about 90-something thousand extra next year in LGA because they updated the formula. So we got a bunch more in LGA, then you combine that with the law enforcement savings that we're seeing. A lot of things came into play.
And we also took out more of the sewer levy.
Yep, the sewer levy. Yep. So we're not supporting that quite as much. A lot of things came together to really mold this, which is good.
Which we knew going into this several years ago, that these were the years that we would be able to, a lot of our big debt was falling off.
Perfect.
I like it.
I think it looks good.
All right, I will prep. So these are our preliminary numbers. I'll get them updated now for final, and this will be the resolution, same format that was passed last year. General fund will get this adjusted. This will get adjusted to 110, and the rest of the debt stays the same. Update final figures to match what we're seeing down here. And then this will be the resolution that we pass. That says we adopt this levy in the budget, and then we're done.
All right, with that, we can move to the Earn, Sick, and Safe Time drafting policy.
So for the Earn, Safe, and Sick Time policy, I had emailed out an update to this earlier today. I apologize for late nature of it. So last week before we went on vacation, I had drafted on the Wednesday, sent out the packets before the holiday. I had drafted the policy. I had sent it out. Then I had a fortuitous chance happening where I have, so if anybody knows Michael Sommerfeld, he's on our fire department, but he also works as the city clerk up in Watertown. And for his job up in Watertown, he- And for his job up in Watertown, he's been trying to tackle this policy as well. And we've been talking on and off for the last five-ish months on this subject. So he gave me a phone call late Wednesday. I know he's been slammed up in Watertown, but we got to talking and we're talking, I had sent him my draft policy and he had some questions on it. So we're talking about that, then Andy happened to come in to check up on some stuff and hand off some invoices and as he normally does. So we had a three way conversation right there. It was very fruitful. In the original policy, we had looked at the, so there's three accrual methods available under the earn sick and save time policy or new law that came into effect. You can do an accrue and accrue and carryover. So for every thirty hours worked, you accrue one hour of earn sick and save time. You can front load forty eight hours of E S S T. But then if it doesn't, if it doesn't all get used at the end of the year, any remaining has to be paid out. And then there's a third option of you can front load eighty hours and if any goes unused, then you don't have to pay it out. Originally, we were looking at the thirty to one and we knew that there were going to need to be some administrative payroll changes because right now we pay the firefighters once a year, but we were needing to track hours at meetings and trainings. Right now, we don't necessarily do that because they're paid on a per meeting basis. We don't have to change that part of it because this is just sick time. But since it's thirty to one, we would need to start tracking, well, how long was everybody spending at these trainings so we can properly do it? And then we'd have to adjust that in pay periods. So we're wondering, well, thirty to one, is it going to be quarterly or monthly depending on who accrues what? So we're talking about it and Michael had suggested, well, if you do eighty hours front loaded, then you don't have to do all that administrative tracking. All you need to do is whenever somebody uses it, which is far less intensive than trying to track as they go. So we put that forward and since there's no payout and it doesn't adversely affect the budget, one of the other changes we looked at was originally when it was thirty to one accrual for firefighter specific, it was, it would apply towards pay and attendance percentages. Because as a firefighter, you wouldn't be earning much. I mean, they don't put, they put hours in, but they don't put so many hours in that they're really banking this E S S T up. So it felt all right since there wouldn't be a much there to allow them to use it on a thirty to one accrual basis. But with the eighty hours of front loading, at the start of the year, they would have eighty hours readily available to use towards this. So in conversations, we said, take out the attendance portion of it since there's going to be so many hours available and not that we would suspect firefighters would use that to their advantage, but we don't incentivize it either. So it made sense to take that out as counted towards attendance and just keep in there, it only applies towards pay. So if they use E S S T, then they, on a training or a meeting, then they'd get twelve dollars for that. Now, they still need to make attendance and they still need to make up any trainings that they miss to stay certified. So you can't use E S S T and say, oh, I don't need this critical training. It only applies towards pay. So they would have to make up the training some other way to keep their certification on that side of things. So we, I've reworked it since then that the eighty hour front loading made a lot of sense when we talked through it. The three of us were in agreement that seemed to be the best route to go forward with it. Mainly from an administrative standpoint, it's going to be a lot easier on that. And just, just with pay, it can't be used for fire calls, missed things like that. It has to be for planned events as best as possible, but, so meetings and trainings and similar types of things could be used towards. We don't see it being used a ton, but we want to make sure we're compliant with law because we have to be.
So I have a question on that.
Yeah.
Let's say they use it for a meeting. Is it one hour? Is it two hours?
Are you tracking how long that meeting went?
So we did, we did talk about that, that we would probably track the hours of what our meetings and stuff were, they took off it, but I mean, as we looked at it, I mean, for them to, there's no way they can use all eighty hours.
Yeah.
If we, what is be able to be used for and yet be able to make their minimums for their trainings, their minimums that they need to meet for meetings, there's just no way that they can. So it really, but we did talk about, you know, we would track how many hours, you know, this meeting was and how many hours this, you know, training was so that we do have that, we could, you know, take it off. Takes a little bit extra for somebody to, you know, track that stuff. But as we looked at things, we didn't feel that the other, being able to use that was...
Yeah, I agree with the front loading, all of that. And I'm not, I'm not worried about abuse. I'm worried about if somebody turns it in, that you're prepared.
Sure.
Right, like it isn't a critical question at all. I just want to make sure that, right, whatever it is, if we're saying it's just a standard one hour, two hour, so that when it's turned in, again, trying to be prepared for the clerical piece of it.
Yep. Like I said, we talked about, they're just going to, this is time we started, this is time we ended. That way we have the window. If somebody says, oh, I wanted to use it for that, well, okay, we can go look at that. It was two hours, we'll take that off the eighty.
Yeah.
And so how it works is for trainings and meetings, if it's a three hour meeting, they use three hours, they get twelve dollars. If it's an hour long meeting, they use an hour and they get twelve dollars. Because they're paid on a per meeting basis. It's not an hourly rate.
Okay.
Yep, it looks good. I like the eighty hour upfront loading.
I do too.
To be the way to go.
Simpler.
Easiest all around. Obviously, after a year, we can look at it if we have to tweak things and change things, but.
That's compliant with the law.
Being an issue, yeah.
Compliant with the law. The other part of it that was tweaked is for our part time employees right here. This means our one employee out at the compo site, that's the only other person. You can use different methods of accrual for different groups of employees. So for the part time employee out of the compo site, he works a very regular schedule, Wednesdays and Saturdays, and then he's got his winter schedule. So, and he's in our payroll system already. He gets paid on a biweekly basis with the rest of us. So for him, I'm proposing that we do the thirty to one because it's very easily trackable with him. With firefighters, it, with twenty five, thirty of them, it could be a real headache. With our one attendant out there, very easy to do on the thirty by one basis.
What about the other on, part time on call employees?
They don't work enough hours. They don't work the eighty to qualify in a year. So they would never, unless they had eighty hours.
Because I thought you only had to work like thirty six hours to qualify.
Eighty, eighty's the threshold.
Okay.
Once you cross eighty, then you're qualified and you never have to requalify. But the, the on call hours that those employees work are so few and far between, they don't hit, they don't come close to eighty. So we don't have to worry about them.
Good. Any other questions?
And has Tim or anybody reviewed the PTO policy to know for sure that it's compliant?
I didn't have Tim do it because I was able to.
Okay.
So in that, when it comes to that, when you look at that, if your existing PTO policy accrues above and beyond and is for greater use, uses than what the new law is, then you're okay. And I had the discussion with representatives from the Department of Labor directly.
Okay, perfect.
Good, looks good. Anything else on that?
Nope. Take a look at it. I would plan to have this for approval at the December eleventh meeting. So if there's anything else you want to see before then, questions, feel free to get ahold of me.
Perfect, thank you. And with that, then we'll adjourn.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.